The May 11, 2020 work session of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Felico, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Maslin.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Mayor Friling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pons. Mr. Zhang.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pons. President.
Here.
Okay, great. Before us today, council preview, Mr. Trivitt, anything you want to highlight for our upcoming meeting on Thursday?
We really only have two items of business on the posted agenda. The first is the public hearings for the proposed FY21 budget and then a presentation by Vicky Semino of the Williamsburg Tourism Council regarding their marketing campaign as we exit the COVID-19 mitigation strategies.
Any questions for Mr. Trivitt? Okay, that takes us to the public comment section of today's meeting, and I don't believe we have anybody on the line wishing to speak. So we'll move on to background presentations, of which we have two. The first is a presentation from the Hampton Roads Small Business Development Center, or HRS BDC, on "After the Disaster: What Next for Small Businesses?" by HRS BDC Executive Director James Carroll III. Ms. DeWitt, would you like to introduce Mr. Carroll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Jim Carroll is our wonderful leader of the Small Business Development Center for the Hampton Roads region. He's a one-person shop, and during normal business practices, he does, we call it circuit rides. He comes up here to meet with Williamsburg businesses at least once a month, and they make appointments with him, but they can also call and video chat with him whenever his services are needed. And he has really been the point of information for us from SBA loans and SBA information and now how to reopen information coming from the federal government and the state government down to our businesses. So he's been working tirelessly every day, and he's going to tell you a little bit about those operations, also a partnership that he has with some William &amp; Mary MBA students who are assisting with that effort. Then what will happen next to keep supporting businesses? What are some options available to those businesses and resources? So here's Jim Carroll.
Michelle, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you very much for having me here today, and I'll go ahead and get my screen up. Yes, as Michelle said, I run the Small Business Development Center, but fortunately, I'm more than a one-person shop in that I have 10 people working for me either on a full or a part-time basis. And we're tasked to provide technical assistance or advice to small business owners, both existing and startups. When COVID-19 hit, part of the CARES Act, the Commonwealth of Virginia, was awarded $4 million to support the SBDC to bring about a shadow organization, if you will, that would do nothing but work with small business owners who were impacted by the COVID virus. We have hired additional staff, we have brought on some programs, and we've developed a couple of tools that are now going to really come into play as the businesses start to reopen. I'm part of a statewide network of 29 offices under George Mason University and a national network of over 1,000 offices, pardon me, under the Association of Small Business Development Centers. In 1999, when the city of Franklin flooded with the Blackwater River overflowing its banks, I thought I had seen it all. The devastation, the physical devastation was total, but fortunately, the area was, the devastation was localized just to the downtown section of Franklin. They had a common purpose, they had customers waiting for them afterwards who were willing to come down and support their small businesses, and the city eventually recovered and thrived and is doing quite well. We now have an entirely different situation. Instead of physical damage, we have psychological damage. And it's not only the small business owners, but their employees and their customers. And they have a lot of things they are going to have to take into consideration as far as whether or not they even want to reopen their business. And a lot of times, the natural inclination is to go ahead and just jump right in, get started, it'll be business as usual, and everything will be fine. Unfortunately, with the major changes we are seeing across the board, both in the businesses and their business practices, in the customers and in the employees, it is not going to be the same. And so, small business owners have to have a framework around which they can make some decisions. When this situation occurred, the first two key areas that the SBDC mobilized was access to information and access to capital. We hired a retired bank vice president who had 30 years' experience in SBA lending, and he has been a godsend for our clients. He understands the intricacies of the small business lending process, especially with the economic injury disaster loan and the payroll protection program, and he has provided absolutely phenomenal advice. We are still providing counseling to our core clients, in other words, the funding that was in place before COVID to handle my normal task as far as providing services for the SBDC clients. As Michelle mentioned, we had two women from the William &amp; Mary MBA program came to the Williamsburg Partnership and offered their services. The partnership referred them to me, and I sat down with them and showed them the things they would have to do in order to serve clients. They have done absolutely yeoman work, even with exams and everything else, they've seen over 60 Williamsburg or historic triangle businesses and provided them with guidance and information so that they could, the businesses could move forward. We've taken that one step further. Out of the money we received from the SBA, I allocated $20,000 to serve as a stipend fund for the William &amp; Mary students who will work for us in seeing clients. We're in the process of putting an MOA together right now. I'm working with Brett Alpert at the Career Services Office, and we expect to have that formally announced here shortly. We also allocated funding to provide sponsorship for the Start Wheel, which is a regional entrepreneurial website, calendar, and news event posting. So that has done very, very well. And then last but not least, I was part of the team that delivered and developed the Virginia Business Recovery Resource Center, and I'll talk about that a little bit later as we go forward. We don't want to tell small business owners what to think, we want to tell them how to think. And they need to sit down and take a hard look at the situation, both physical, financial, as well as the mental and emotional states across the board, and that's both them and their clients and their customers. They need to make a key set of assumptions right up front so that they can go back and use that as a baseline for any decisions they're going to do, and they can go back and validate as the situation changes. And we're anticipating the situation will be changing significantly many, many times in the next six months so that they can help determine a course of action as they move forward. Basically, they have four choices open to them. They can reopen their business, they can either close, they can buy, sell, or merge, or they can change or reinvent their business. All of them have attendant risks associated with it, all of them have attendant challenges associated with it, and there's going to be different information and different focuses on what kind of information is going to be needed if you're going to open your business or if you're going to close your business. Basically, what we want them to do, and we will help them to do, is make their decision a fact-based decision and not a gut call. We'll look at the risks and returns, and we'll help them develop the plans, we'll help them develop a 30-day plan, a 60-day plan, and a 90-day plan, and taking a look at it from a financial perspective, from the timeline and major actions that are there. And then, as we work with them, we will help them revise and update their plans accordingly so that they can take advantage of whatever opportunities the market may present themselves as they move forward. The resources available to us, you know, the SBDC and my staff, both here locally as well as across the Commonwealth of Virginia, the Mason School of Business at William &amp; Mary, which is going to be, I think, an outstanding tool, the support that Michelle and Yuri have given me has been absolutely first-rate. They have been putting out the information that the small business owners need, and they have been a tremendous touchpoint for me to making sure that I get, that Williamsburg is well-represented. And then, last but not least, each business has its own management team, their attorneys, their accountants, their insurance agents, their bankers, and their families, and they need to take advantage of the resources that are there. Now, what I'd like to do is show you the, let me get into one last thing, what I'd like to do is show you, here we are. Show you the new website that we have developed. And I'm sorry, it is not there. If you go back to the, I'm sorry, I can't access that one right now. If you just go to take a look at the website, it's virginiasbdc.org, and then Recovery Resource Center. You will see that the tools that we have established there, we're following the governor's instructions as far as what businesses he wants to see open right away. And subject to any questions, that concludes my presentation to the board and city council.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. We very much appreciate you taking the time to speak with us today, and of course, we all appreciate the great work that you and SBDC are doing for businesses throughout our area. I'll come to my colleagues for comments and questions.
Yes, Mr. Carroll, I appreciate you being here today, and certainly appreciate all the efforts that your organization is doing to help, you know, these small businesses, and maybe some of them not so small during these unprecedented times. Just out of curiosity, what are you hearing most from the, you know, these employers? Is it concerned about employees, concerned about, you know, policy and procedures on how to open safely, or just the validity of their business moving forward?
Sir, it's a combination of all three, and then some more. In particular, cash flow is their number-one concern right now. A lot of businesses have taken out either the economic injury disaster loans or the payroll protection program loans, and if they don't dot every i and cross every t, they run the risk of losing the loan forgiveness that the payroll protection program in particular has. And if that's the case, that's going to be additional debt that they're going to be saddled with, albeit at a low interest rate, either 1% for payroll protection or 3.75 for the EIDL loans, but still, that's additional debt. And if you're not selling product, you know, instead of throwing a drowning man a lifeline, you're throwing him a line that has an anchor attached to it, and they're going to sink even faster.
Sure.
So we're going to keep our eyes very closely on that ball to make sure that they know exactly what's going on.
Yeah, and you're absolutely right. I was speaking with somebody the other day, and just concerned about the PPP loan and their ability to pay it back, how to use those funds, and I understand that there's some discussion that those eight weeks may be extended a little longer, you know, and again, I'm talking with another business, just the cycle of payroll, it's not going to allow them to use all of their PPP funding within that designated time, and so they're going to fall without, outside of that 75%. So lots of concerns there, and so I hope that there's some lobbying efforts with the Congress to see if we can make that a little bit more easy to understand and businesses able to use it. I think there's a lot of work ahead, and I'm thankful that, you know, there's organizations like yours and others that are trying to assist these businesses because it is unprecedented times, and they're going to need all the assistance and guidance that they can get.
Yes, sir, and, you know, thank you for that, and you're absolutely right. It's going to be a marathon, it's not going to be a sprint. This is, we're looking at a multi-year engagement and then some to help these small businesses get through this situation. We will, I will be more than happy to come back and brief city council on any topics that you would like me to address as far as what our actions are with your small business community or anything that is associated with the SBDC.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll, this Councilman Zhang, for your presentation today. It's really informative, and just from the outset, I want to say that we in the city are incredibly grateful for partners such as yourselves and with the Business Council, with the Chamber, and with all the other organizations that are contributing in some way to helping our businesses afloat. We're owning this together, and this only proves to be another tool in our toolkit. As you may have known, and for folks who might be tuning in, the city council has taken some actions to provide some relief for this, and this is just another one in that tool set. I just had a very quick hypothetical as a question. So I'm a small business owner today, watching your presentation, I'm interested. Obviously, it's very informative, so obviously, I'll give you a call. What stuff should I bring with me when I go for my initial consultation, and what can I expect?
Yes, sir, the initial consultation is getting to know one another and figuring out, okay, I need to know what your business is, what kind of financial records you have, your balance sheet, cash flow statement, income statement. Need to know what you know about your market. Basically, you have to enlighten me as to everything that you're looking at from your perspective. I will take that information, we will start to analyze it with the various tools that we have, and then we'll start to help you figure out, okay, what kinds of courses of action are available to you. Do you want to reopen the business, or do you want to close the business? Is there an opportunity for you to buy or merge with another business, possibly a competitor? Or do you sit down and try and reinvent yourself? You know, we've had breweries, distilleries down here on the south side shifted away from making alcohol to making hand sanitizer, a totally, total, total different reinvention of themselves. So these are some of the things that we would talk about right up front. One thing I do want to emphasize is that all of the consultations we do with our clients is strictly confidential, totally free of charge, and totally non-judgmental. So you don't have to worry about the reaction you're going to get from either me or any of my staff if you have a situation where you, like, oh, God, I haven't paid my taxes in seven years. Okay, you haven't, we'll take, we'll work with you to figure out how to address that. We don't judge, we don't make credit decisions or anything along those lines, because your metrics of success are jobs, cash, and capital, and those are our metrics of success, is your jobs, cash, and capital. So we have a symbiotic relationship.
I have two quick follow-ups, and thank you for your answer. I think you touched on a really important point. You know, obviously, you have small businesses, maybe some folks who may just have just come into the business scene and are still picking up on things that they can improve on, but I think it also includes, based on what I'm hearing, is, you know, it's open for seasoned business owners, and it's okay to seek help from experts to get that guidance, the counseling needed. I think in this pandemic, all is thrown up in the air, and we're all in this together, so might as well take, take use of the resources available. My second follow-up, real quick, so let's say I'm a business owner that doesn't have all the necessary metrics in hand. I don't really have a business plan, I don't really, I mean, I have my account balance sheets from the bank. Is there any reason why you would deny a business owner who may have not had all the materials that you have stated on hand for your services?
No, sir, we do not, and we're finding out that they are the most vulnerable
Right.
businesses right now because they don't have a way to understand the cash position of their company other than their checkbook. They don't have a balance sheet, they don't have a cash flow statement, they don't know what the dating or the agent is on their receivables.
Right.
They're really at risk, and we will work with them to show them the tools that they can use to mitigate that risk, but it's still going to be very difficult for them, and we're seeing some that have already unfortunately passed the tipping point, and they only have one option, and that is to cease operations.
Well, I think, based on your account, I'm really grateful that, no matter where the business may be in terms of their position or the expertise, that your guys are always available to provide that help, and we're really grateful that you guys have stepped up to the plate, especially during this pandemic crisis. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, and I don't have any questions, I just wanted to also thank you for the presentation. I think that Michelle and her team, to your point, have been doing a great job as far as disseminating information to the small businesses here in Williamsburg. Does surprise me, though, when I talk to business owners and mention a couple of funds and programs I've heard of that they're unaware. And can you suggest any additional ways to make sure that businesses know of these programs, particularly ones that can provide financial assistance to them? And are you also hearing that the businesses aren't as aware as you might think they would be? As far as searching out any possible tidbits of information, answers to questions, things like that?
Yes, ma'am. We strongly recommend and we highly encourage that the first stop they have in their quest for information is to talk to their economic development departments, and shortly thereafter, talk to their chambers or any of the other professional organizations like the Greater Williamsburg Partnership to find out what information is out there. The chambers and the economic development departments have a fantastic repository of resources, and it's just a simple matter of getting out and doing the work. Sometimes people are embarrassed to come out and ask those questions because they don't, they feel they're not going to be well-received, and I can tell you that that is not the case. You know, they think the chamber is just for members, it is not just the case, the chamber is there for everybody. Now, later on, if you care to join, we welcome you with open arms, but right now, we're here to provide assistance across the board.
And one last point, from what I think some people might think that this is limited to certain types of businesses as far as the impact from the pandemic, but I would suggest that this is impacting all sectors of businesses, not just, say, restaurants or entertainment entities.
Yes, ma'am, you're exactly right, and we're here to provide services across the board. I have areas of expertise that is backed up by other counseling staff here, and once again, throughout the entire VS BDC network to address the issues that are facing small business owners across the board. We have one woman who specializes in nothing but daycare and early education programs. We have people who specialize in financial analysis and spreadsheets. We have people who are the access to capital, talking about the various loan programs that are out there. At the state level, we have a gentleman who specializes in small-town and merchants programs, and he has been down to Williamsburg on several occasions to give presentations, and he's our restaurant and retail expert. We're getting, we're getting expertise from across the entire spectrum of businesses, and even so, when it comes down to it, business is business. You know, it changes a little bit if you're running a retail store or a restaurant, but the core fundamentals are still, you know, selling your product, maintaining your customers, beating your competition, and running a, making a profit and having good cash flow.
Thank you.
Hi, yeah, thanks. Couple questions. Are you able to actually coach nonprofit organizations?
No, sir, that's one of the drawbacks that we have, is that we do not work, we cannot work with nonprofits, we work strictly with for-profit businesses. I've established a partnership with the United Way of Southampton Roads, and they, I have been giving them information that is, that I come across on the nonprofit side of the house, and there's a woman by the name of Teresa Stafford, and the director of the United Way Southampton Roads is Luciano Ramos, and they have information that they have compiled and information that I have provided them that is there for the nonprofits.
Also, you talked about partnering with the Chamber, what about partnering with SCORE?
We are an affiliated program, we're all, we're all under the SBA, the Small Business Administration, and, you know, it's one of those things, when I first came in, somebody asked the difference between SCORE and the SBDC, and I said, well, we're younger and better-looking. But now that I'm 68-years-old, I really can't say the younger side anymore. But we work together, if necessary, we will cooperate if we have resources that they need or they have resources that we need, but we're all in this together to serve the clients. It just gives us a wider range if we, you know, work both sides of the highway at the same time.
What's, what's your impression of the early programs from the federal government for the pandemic? Because I get the impression that the early programs really depended on you having, you, the business, having a good banking relationship, and then that bank actually being committed to the program, whereas people that either were small and didn't have a large banking relationship, or they were working with the wrong bank in this particular case, were out of luck.
To say that the programs were run out, you know, in a very, very orderly fashion is unfortunately not true. There were, there were serious flaws across the board. The Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, the EIDL, crashed the first week it was up because it got overwhelmed with the number of applications that were coming in, and the applications themselves were five multi-page forms that had to be filled out, you know, just an inordinate amount of information that had to get processed. The SBA, to their credit, took the system down, completely reinvented it, beefed up the backend technical side of the house, streamlined the application process, and in the period of two weeks or 14 days, they did the same amount of lending that they did the preceding 14 years in the EIDL loan program. So they got, you know, they've, they've got their act together, and I hate that expression, but they fixed the problems that are there. The problems that we're running into now is that they're running out of funding. Used to be you could get up to $2 million in working capital loans, that's now down to $150,000. They're not taking any more applications from businesses other than agricultural businesses. And now agriculture has a very broad definition there, but it's, it's limited. The Payroll Protection Program, yeah, there's been a lot of bad press about that, a lot of banks who were getting their bigger customers in so they could get a higher fee, the, I'll take care of you because you've got $1 million sitting in my bank, therefore, you're my new best friend. Yes, sir, there was a lot of that, unfortunately. What was being done was the way the law was written, and that, you know, a poorly drafted law is a poorly drafted law, and, you know, you're stuck with having to implement that, both the spirit and the letter of that law, and that's what, that's what happened, and I'm, you know, it's an shame, and I'm sorry it did for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Carroll. One last question.
Yes.
One of the questions or concerns I've heard more recently, more than others, is the changing landscape around the PPP qualifications and then the requirement to send in certification that the business owner attests that everything that they've represented is as, as the law requires, but the guidelines for that requirement change throughout the process. Have you been hearing much about that from folks?
Regrettably, Mr. Mayor, yes, I have. Treasury has not, and the SBA have not issued the final guidelines as far as determining what exactly will be forgivable and not forgivable. As one of the questions was noted earlier, are we going to extend this eight-week period? What would it take to make that happen? Is that a regulatory change, or is that going to have to be a new law that gets changed because it's changing the old law? There's just a lot of uncertainty out there due to a lack of knowledge because we have not received the guidance from Treasury in Washington. There's just a lot of uncertainty out there due to a lack of knowledge because we have not received the guidance from Treasury in Washington.
Well, once again, thank you very much for being here and hopefully we'll have the opportunity to hear from you again down the road a little bit, one more on in another stage of this situation.
Mr. Mayor, I'd welcome the opportunity to come back and address you and members of council. And I have to admit, I cannot say enough about the support that Michelle and Yuri have given me over these past six or seven weeks. It has been absolutely first rate and top notch.
Well, thank you. That's great to hear.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that concludes the presentation. Next, we have the presentation and discussion of the city manager's FY21 budget proposal. Mr. Trivett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll share my presentation here. Okay, so what we thought we'd do today is go through the city manager's proposed budget for FY21. What I have done is I've put together the same PowerPoint that we use from the city council's February retreat regarding the budget and just simply modified it to reflect the current budget as of today. And also to include some of the adjustments that we have made as a result of our COVID-19 revenue forecast for both FY20 and FY21. So let's get started. So just our agenda, just to walk through it is, of course, we're going to start with the end of the fiscal year for FY20 and 19 so that you can sort of see how those revenues impact the future budget year. We're going to talk about forecasted revenues. I've got Mrs. Dameron and Assessor Green on the meeting here today so that they can address any specific questions regarding the assessments or the revenue forecast. And then we're going to go into what's really most important to people regarding the city's budget, what's in and what's out. Of course, this is not an exhaustive list. The budget is a very large book of material, and so we can't cover it all. But what we try to do is boil down to the highlights, the things that we think are most important so that we can give you a good educated glimpse of what we've built into the budget. And also what's not in. And then we're going to talk a little bit about CIP and how we've made some structural changes to it that make it more transparent and easy to see the flow of funds. So we'll start with how did we finish the year? And so this is one of the slides that we have modified to include impacts from COVID-19. As you know, we have spent the last few weeks talking about how COVID-19 and the mitigation measures that we have been enduring for these many weeks have impacted our revenue estimates for both this fiscal year and the future fiscal year. So if you look at FY19, what we're showing you here on this chart is on the slide is the surpluses that the city usually enjoys at the close of the fiscal year. So at the end of FY19, we finished the year with $1.2 million in surplus in general fund. That's a result of a combination of both reduced expenses from what we had budgeted, but also additional revenues from what we had forecasted. We sort of do both of those estimates conservatively to produce that surplus because for quite some time in the city of Williamsburg, the health of our capital improvement plan has been at least partially based on that surplus being transferred to the sales tax fund to help to offset project costs. Our original forecast for FY20 was that we would finish the year with a surplus slightly less of about $900,000. Again, conservative estimates, it's likely that had the year continued as normal, we would have finished in a similar position to FY19. But COVID-19. And so we have revised those estimates. We did a fairly significant presentation to city council twice now on our strategy for dealing with revenue shortfalls as a result of COVID-19. So this shows you that our new forecast for the close of FY20 is a deficit in revenue to expenses of $4.2 million. And so you can you can see how that's made up. We're expecting to have some savings on expenses. We're estimating about $583,000 there, and we're tracking pretty well for that right now at the moment. Of course, that changes from month to month. We have encouraged departments to do spending constraint. And all indications are they're taking it very seriously. So it's it's it is possible we finish FY20 with a stronger amount of savings in the expenditure line than what we forecasted here. And then revenues, of course, are very difficult to forecast. So we gave you some examples of how we were adjusting revenues. Again, we think very conservatively so that when we finish the year, it's an outside case scenario that we're shooting for. Already, we are tracking those expenses and revenues so that we can show you how we're tracking in terms of our forecast. And right now, we're a little ahead of where we thought we would be, which is positive news. And of course, you've got to be careful looking at those numbers because, again, they can change from month to month. You never know exactly how revenues are going to be impacted until you get to the collection month. So as I said, we've done some adjusting for COVID-19, knowing that we've got that forecasted deficit. You can't begin to budget for FY21 until you factor in where you started the fiscal year, which is, of course, the close of FY20. So what we have done is adjusted our revenue lines to include some transfers from three different sources to offset that deficit of 4.2. The first line of attack is to accumulate the savings and unnecessary projects included in the capital improvement plan. And when I say unnecessary, I don't mean that they're frivolous or unneeded. I just mean they're not critical to the mission in the year, the net this year that they were programmed. And so we're able to push those off. Seeing as how we're almost at the end of FY20 now, there are not many of those projects. Most of the savings that we've identified in the CIP for FY20 comes from savings as a result of projects that were completed and came in under budget. Then the second line is transferring funds from unspent monies from the Tourism Development Grant Program. So these are funds that were unawarded or unclaimed for projects that applied for funding through that grant grant program. So we will make a transfer from there to help offset. And then the last line is the reserve, the general fund reserve. So when we finish the year of FY20, we will start with capital improvement plan. We will move to the Tourism Development Grant Fund. And then our last stop would be the general fund reserve. The idea being that we take as little as possible out of the general fund reserve to balance the FY20 budget so that that reserve is as healthy as it can be going into and coming out of the FY21 fiscal year. So this is just a glimpse at how the funds stake out for FY21, the general fund total of 36.6, followed by the utility fund at 7.5, and then we have the sales tax fund at 6.8. And then the Tourism Development Fund at 3.3, the Public Assistance Fund at 2.9, and the final fund that the city manages is the Quarter Pass CDA, the pass-through fund of $601,228. For a total FY21 budget across all funds of $57,823,319. And, you know, the important thing to note as we go through this is what we've done since the February presentation is we have adjusted these numbers to include the revenue adjustments as well as expenditure adjustments to the extent that we can for COVID-19. So if you look at this, this particular slide is very similar. And that's because we're really just looking at revenues here, regardless of sources. So the budget would remain the same. Again, the theory being that as we tried to adjust for COVID-19, we wanted to minimize the impact that the mitigation measures have had on the overall progress of the city that's reflected by where we are currently in the budget process. So where does the money come from? We have a couple of different sources. The first is other taxes. Other taxes include sort of a broad category for taxes, including meals, lodging, cigarette tax, and a very large source of funding. Next is the property tax at 13 million. All other taxes, which again is sort of a large category to capture revenues that are generated internally, such as license and permits, fines, changes for services, those kinds of things. Next is intergovernmental. These are transfers between government funds. So VDOT transfers, things like that, some some grant programs are included in that. And then the transfers that are necessary from the general fund to the tourism fund are also reflected there. And then this next one is one that we have added, and that is the COVID-19 adjustments category. So what this one does is it captures some of the adjustments that may be necessary at the end of the year to help balance the budget. So you'll note there that it's $5 million. We do expect the deficit to be more like 6.5. The reason it's a little bit lower is because it doesn't include all of the funding associated with those three sources of funds that we talked about. We'll show you that on another slide. And then miscellaneous captures sort of everything else that's left in the revenue bucket, including EMS recovery, local government payments, general fund bond proceeds, and that will total $3 million for FY21. So next is the real estate assessment slide. This is one that, of course, we focused on a lot last year because we did anticipate a 6% increase in the assessed value of the city. We did tell you then that we thought it would continue to increase to to a minor degree, and it has. We're expecting again this year in the neighborhood of 3% increase in the assessed value. Now, the budget has adjusted down just a little bit between 2.8 and 2.9%. And you may remember last year, we had a similar strategy, but in a much greater scale so that we could have a very conservative budget estimate going into the budget year. And what that does, it allows us to finish the year with the surplus that we showed you on a previous slide. So we try to be as conservative as we can. We also try to leave a little bit of room for appeals and things like that, delinquencies that may come up as a result of the increased assessment. So now we look at the regional tax comparison. Obviously, this is something that's very important as we consider how we can adjust our revenue streams. As you can see here, the city of Williamsburg still has the lowest, one of the lowest tax rates in the region for almost every type of tax there is. So the only tax increase that the city staff is proposing for this fiscal year is to increase the cigarette tax from 20 cents to 50 cents. And that's reflected in these numbers. The revenue associated with that increase has been adjusted for a decline in sales as a result of the increased fee. And so we think that that's a, again, a fairly conservative estimate and is part of our budget balance strategy. Fiscal health, forecasts and trends. This is a slide that we have not adjusted for COVID-19, and we did that on purpose. We wanted you to see the projections, including the 2020 estimates as they were prior to COVID-19 so that you could sort of see the trajectory of the fiscal health of the city minus this disaster situation that we're in now with the public health emergency. So we were tracking pretty well. In fact, if you look at the the chart on the right, it shows you a little bit more granular detail of how those lines between expenses and revenues are separating just slightly from what they had been, and that's good news. So we'll continue to monitor that closely, but that's something that we want to keep an eye on as we begin to think about future budget strategies. And then the last chart shows you the revenues for the city. And again, I think the message there is that for many of these taxes, we're not seeing a substantial decline. I have said it before, I think they are largely stagnant, but not necessarily in a decline. With one exception to that is the $2 lodging tax, which has been in a fairly steady decline for several years. So now we talk about where does the money go? This should be a fairly familiar chart to you. And again, this is looking at the totality of the budget, not just the general fund. So as you can see there, our largest expense is education, 11.1 million. Public safety comes in next at 10.2. Parks, Recreation and Culture midway up the list at $2 million, representing 3.5% of the total budget, all the way up to community development at 1.2 million or 2.1% of the total budget. So now we look closely at the general fund, and we start, of course, with revenues, and we keep these, we try to keep these in very similar groupings of money from the slide we showed you before so that you can see them relevant to each other. So again, other taxes, including what we call the tourism taxes, the sales tax, lodging, meals tax, are included in that other tax category, property tax, the all other, the intergovernmental, miscellaneous, and then we've added the $6.5 million adjustment for COVID-19. And the reason that this is 6.5 on this slide versus the 5 million that was shown earlier is this is inclusive of what would be coming from the general fund reserve to balance that budget. And so it's shown as revenue as opposed to being unassigned fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. Now, I just want to pause there for a second and make sure that everybody still understands the premise of this. So what we are doing is forecasting, as I said, a worst-case scenario. And these adjustments will not occur until we reach the end of the fiscal year. And the advantage of that is we get to benefit from the actual experience, meaning the actual expenses, the actual revenues of the fiscal year as it progresses. So that when we get to the end, if the worst-case scenario proves to have been too conservative, then we will not have to make as large a transfer from any of the three sources, right? And we will be able to make the decision about where to prioritize that. Do we want to use more or less of the reserve? Do we want to use more or less of the capital improvement? Do we want to use more or less of the Tourism Development Grant Fund? And at some point during the fiscal year, because we're tracking that comparison to the forecast versus actual, we may be able to make that adjustment, say, mid-year of 2021. Hopefully, by mid-year, which would be December, January, February timeframe, we will have a much better idea of how those revenues are going to track, but more importantly, the speed of recovery. So then in the general fund, where does the money go? $21 million goes to departmental expenses. That's 56%. Next is the schools' operating cost of 10.3. And then it goes right straight through to health at $480,000 at the top of the chart. So now, again, looking a little bit more closely at the general fund spending and what drives increases. You can see here, this is showing you the bar graphs of the various departments as they're divided and their increases from one year to the next. Under education, and we talked about this quite a bit at the retreat, at the point in the retreat, which, of course, is held in February, the school budget is largely still unknown. And as everyone knows, our participation in the school budget is driven by a contract with James City County, where the city pays very close to 10% at this point. So ultimately, what we pay for education is driven by what the James City County Board of Supervisors approves for the school board and what the school board tells us they need in way of funding. So what we have budgeted for is what the school system budget originally proposed included a 3.3% increase over what we had the year before. We've made a note here that James City County, we know, is currently considering a significant reduction in their operating budget and has requested a similar plan from the school system. And if that materializes between now and June, then we would need to decide how to adjust our budget accordingly. So just making that note because at this point, we have budgeted for the full request, but obviously, that number could be reduced as we move into the adoption period. So from there, we go to public safety. That's a big driver in the overall cost of general fund expenses this year because we are adding a great deal of staff. We're adding two new police officers and a total of five new firefighters. The firefighter number is a little bit misleading only because we actually added one of those positions mid-year of 20, and they're currently on the payroll. But because it's new to the budget, it's reflected as a new FTE for the budget year. And then the other four positions, we're actually applying for a safer grant that would pay for a percentage of the funding required to employ those people over the course of four years. And so it starts out with a larger amount of funding that you receive from the grant, and then it sort of weans down as you get to year five, where the city would be paying 100%. Our plan right now is to apply for that grant. If we don't receive the grant, then we will not add those positions. We will wait until a future fiscal year where we can reapply and hopefully receive the grant. And then in year three, if we've still not been awarded those positions through the grant process, then it would be the staff recommendation that we go ahead and add those positions. They are important to us. So that's a that's a recommendation that we may be revisiting based on what happens with the safer grant as we go through the year. Public Works, one of the changes that we made this year was we looked at the need to do additional mowing, and we were forced with the decision of either adding personnel or increasing our mowing contract. Ultimately, we decided it was cheaper to increase the mowing contract than to add personnel. And so that amount is included in this budget. Human Services, we've added staff there. I'm going to show you that on another slide. And then General Government, I wanted to talk just generally about that. It's noted fairly extensively in the budget message if you've had the chance to look at that. But one of the things that drives the general government expense this year is the way in which we were accounting insurances associated with the departments. We moved the insurance around, hopefully to make it a bit more transparent in terms of the departmental spending minus those insurances, which really the department heads themselves doing which really the department heads themselves, doing their budgets, have no control over. And so that's driven a large increase compared to year over year, just making that structural change. So now, looking at what is included in the budget, we start with probably the largest item in the increase, and that is a 2% pay increase for the city personnel. And that's a cost of living increase. So many people would not look at that necessarily as a raise. That's just simply the cost of keeping up with salaries in general. 2% increase in the James City County operating for the school system. As we showed you earlier, that's an increase. The five fire department personnel, CSA increase, Child Services Act increases for human services. Two police officers are included in the budget. We're increasing the parking ambassador hours so that we can get stronger parking enforcement in those areas that we need them downtown, as well as having the ambassadors on hand more often to deal with questions and answer people's needs on the street, as well as manage the parking garage in those hours of high volume. We've added a property maintenance inspector. And so this is a position that we feel like is definitely warranted. One of the largest complaints that we get is on property maintenance these days, and it's largely because we don't have an inspector out there doing what we would call proactive enforcement. Our building inspectors do do property maintenance right now, but it's not the general focus of their job. And so this is a position that the city had before the recession. The position was cut to save some costs. And now what we'd like to do is add that back. One of the ways that we are offsetting the cost of that is to increase revenue to the building department with a small increase in their fees that they charge, still well under the regional fee structure. We're adding an accountant to the finance department. One of the things that we, one of the items of feedback we got from the auditor at the close of the year was that we really needed more staff in finance. A lot of burden has fallen on them to manage the city's finances, and we've been doing it exceptionally well, but we have a lot of people that are doing lots of jobs, and it'd be nice to get some separation of duty and some redundancy. And so adding this position will give us that flexibility. Increased insurances, as I said, we moved those around, but in general, they increased as well. Contracting additional mowing, $40,000. That's the public work exchange I talked about. A legislative grant consultant, as you know, the assistant city manager typically was handling legislative issues for us, both at the federal and the state level. We added a consultant at the federal level this year to help us identify grants that might be out there. They are currently working with the fire department on the safer grant application, and I think will greatly increase our chances of receiving that award. A library increase of $35,000 was proposed. This is an example of an outside agency that we fund through our budget that's jointly funded by a number of other localities. And I think that where we see these outside agency line items, like the library, maybe even the regional jail, we could see their original budget proposals get reduced as a result of feedback that they get from those other localities regarding what they've included. So I think it is entirely possible that this $35,000 increase that was proposed by the library gets revised to a much lower number, if not removed completely. And then this bullet talks about the human services additional staff. When we presented this in February, we only had one social service worker being additional, and the council feedback was to try and add the second one that was identified as a need. We were able to accommodate that in the budget. It's important to note that with social service positions, typically the city doesn't pay 100% of that cost. It's shared with the state, and that's the case here, which is why that number is actually lower than you might expect. And so that's the city's cost to add these three positions, including one part-time position that's going to go to full time. And then what we're doing, the final bullet there is adjusting average low wage in the city, recognizing that we need to do some things to keep up with state legislation. And so this is a very minor cost to take a first step in that direction. So as I mentioned, outside agencies, this is just a summary slide that shows you how we ended with our outside agency conversations. As you know, we have a group of bodies that review outside agency requests every budget year, and they make recommendations to city council. This is a summary of how those processes ended the this fiscal year or the coming fiscal year recommendations. I think the thing I'd like to highlight is that this line showing, I'm sorry. This line showing the funding increases year over year. As you can see, we have increased the funding for various groups. Human services, $3,500. The Community and Economic Development Group, $19,000. And then tourism, $241,000. And the majority of those increases in the tourism group are shown at the bottom. The largest increase was the decision that we made to fund Culture Fix to host a number of events inside the community. An important note to make is that while the slide shows $215,000 designated for Culture Fix in the coming fiscal year, we know that one of the things that we changed last year was we started requiring performance agreements for this group of outside agencies. And those performance agreements stipulate exactly what the money is to be used for. In Culture Fix's case, that's tied to a number of events that, you know, at this point, we can't say for certain will be held or won't be held, and that could obviously impact the amount of money that gets drawn down from the award. Ideally, we are able to have all of the events that we've contracted for, and that would certainly be the outcome that the city would enjoy. So this slide talks about another change that's sort of unique to this year. For many years, the city has donated $1.3 million to the Klono Williamsburg Foundation for the purposes of helping them carry out their marketing campaign. With the addition of the Williamsburg Tourism Council and a different vehicle for funding marketing on a much larger scale, the question was posed, do we really need to keep funding marketing on that smaller scale? And does our $1.3 million really make a significant difference in the overall marketing of the region? And the answer was, we could probably do something better with that money, at least from the standpoint of satisfying citizen concern that it's something that they benefit from. And so this year, we met a series of times with the Klono Williamsburg Foundation and talked about how better to use that money. And this represents the list of projects that were identified for the coming fiscal year. So as you can see here, the very first three items are events. And again, the same note would apply, that if they don't have the event, the question is, how would that affect the funding? Unlike Culture Fix, the tourism fund and the money that's typically donated to Klono Williamsburg is part of their operating budget. And so we need to think strongly about reducing that amount. I think the better tact would be, and this was suggested by Councilman Maslin, was that we talked to Klono Williamsburg about how to redesignate that fund, that funding, should an event not be able to occur. Of course, right now, we have every indication that by Independence Day, we'll be able to have some sort of celebration. It might not look the same as it always has, but we certainly hope that we can proceed and welcome all those people to Williamsburg. So what's not included? This is the question that we typically get. You know, our budget process includes a series of meetings with all of the department heads and the constitutional officers, including some of the agencies that we fund outside of the city, like the Commonwealth's Attorney, to talk about needs going into the next fiscal year. And that generates a whole list of things that we do our best to try and accommodate as we try to put together the city manager's budget. But obviously, most years, we can't accommodate everything. So this list this year reflects everything that's currently not reflected in this budget. So we have had a request in the police department for two new officers. They are not included, 140. There are two officers in, the police department asked for a total of four. The police take-home vehicle benefit of $105,000. We've talked about that before. It definitely impacts our recruitment and retention in the police department, but at this point, we don't quite have a solution ready for you, and $105,000 may or may not solve the problem. So rather than tie up $105,000 in a solution that might not work, we're going to continue to look at that for future fiscal years. As I said earlier, changes to the James City County budget are not quite known yet. I think their adoption schedule is similar to ours. They won't adopt until June. So we've not been able to reflect any changes, including reductions that are proposed in this budget. We typically try to budget some stabilization funds. This year, we've not been able to do that. Obviously, looking at a deficit and talking about using the reserve to help us balance that, that's something that we want to get back to in future years. And then the last bullet in that line is state and federal relief funds. Obviously, I still think that it's a very good chance that we will receive some federal funding to help offset our losses and revenues, but it's too early to predict what that might be. And so they're not included in the budget. But if we get them, then that'll be something for us to talk about as we look at a mid-year adjustment for the budget. And then the last bullet sort of combines all of the staffing requests that we still have from the various departments to help offset the current workload. Again, these are all positions that we feel are very important and would certainly help us achieve the mission, but this year just could not accommodate in the budget. Other agency requests, so this is a list of agency requests I wanted to highlight for you that were not included in the proposed budget, and at least one of them, we would ask you to take some action on as you give us direction for how you want the budget to be amended, to reflect your desires. So we'll skip right to that one, the Thomas Nelson Community College line for site improvements. There was an error in the application for funding this year that resulted in $5,670 decrease from last year's funding amount. As I said, that was an oversight, and so they've asked us to correct that. We didn't receive that request to make the change, though, until after we had published the city manager's budget. And so now we would like to have city council's direction to make that adjustment to increase it to match last year's funding level. And that increase would be $5,670. And then there are some other requests there that are shown that were unable to be accommodated. Heritage Humane's request for $50,000. We did go back to funding them at previous year's levels of $25,000, and that would be the staff recommendation. Next, we talk about the utility fund. So again, we look at the revenues, charges for water, the charge for sewage. Of course, that's a pass-through amount, and then all other forms of revenue. So then we have expenditures, you can see here, sewage, administration, water treatment, water system, the CIP, and debt service, and then finally, purchasing water. And so that water purchase agreement is sort of a fail-safe in case we should have a problem and need to purchase water. We could, so far, we've not had to use that. So you can see how those stack up. With the utility fund, you know, the big news story, I think, this year is that we do see some decrease in usage, both in the water purchase and in the sewage treatment, of course, they correlate. We think that's largely due to consumption being down, low-flow toilets and more conservative-minded usage. And then, of course, last year, Mr. Pons pointed out, we had sort of a wet year, and the temperatures were down. So maybe watering was less on irrigation systems. So a lot of things driving that. And then the other part of the story for the utility fund is a much lower-than-usual CIP amount, and that's simply because we just don't have a large number of capital improvement projects planned for the next fiscal year. I will point out, though, that we're currently working on a sewage issue out on Capital Landing Road that's fairly significant. So looking at the regional utility rate comparison, this is a chart that we've struggled with for a few years now to accurately reflect what the comparisons are. I think we've got a better plan for next budget year, so that we can show you this in a more meaningful way. It's very difficult to compare these, because the localities also use different methods for calculating sewage rates. And then, of course, you have the HRSD fee that gets added on to the total. So we're going to be looking at a totally different way to report that to you next year. But the bottom line is that, in just about every way that you look at this, the city's utility rate is by far the lowest in the region. So next, we turn to the sales tax fund. Obviously, this is part of our COVID-19 recovery strategy, and so we have adjusted these numbers to reflect a lower-than-normal revenue for the sales tax fund, which is largely driven by the sales taxes and the surpluses that we see at the end of each fiscal year, and, of course, the grants that we're able to apply for and receive successfully. As you see on the right-hand side of the slide, the expenditures, this shows you sort of an adjusted model for the projects that have been removed from the sales tax or from the sales tax fund for the upcoming fiscal year FY21 and pushed out at least one year. And I'm going to show you a list of those projects a little later on. So now we move into the actual CIP, and rather than going through this and painstakingly talking about projects, what I'd like to do is sort of run through the slides so that I can show you what I think is probably the most impactful part of the CIP budget this year. And that is on the final slide, it should be this one. So historically, with the CIP, what we have done is we have grouped school expenses in one line. And so it was a very large number, and it's sort of forecasted out over the five-year period. But if you weren't intimately familiar with the school system's budget request, it was very difficult to tell exactly what projects from the school system were included in that number and when they were being funded. And so what we decided to do this year was to pull that line out of the CIP proper and show it at the bottom before the total, so that you can see the school impact and on the CIP totals at the bottom, as well as better track those individual projects from the new construction plan that the school system has year over year and where the city's funding might be required. This is a list of the projects that were submitted as part of our budget review with the department heads for the FY21 budget in the CIP. What we did is we went back to the department heads, and we asked them to consider the projects that were included in the CIP and try and identify projects that could be pushed out at least one year. And these would be projects that were considered to be non-mission critical. And so you can see there is the list, a whole host of projects. Again, these are not necessarily projects that are being canceled. They're just being postponed one year, so that we can capture that funding in the FY21 budget. As you can see, the largest item on the list is downtown parking. That was a placeholder to begin looking at the possibility of an additional downtown structure. Again, that's not a necessary-to-the-mission type of project, so we've pushed that out a year, along with some sidewalks. The housing parking lots, that's the Williamsburg Housing Redevelopment Authority parking lots. We were able to accommodate that as part of this year's paving plan. So that's actually part of the schedule for this spring. So that project will actually be deleted from the CIP. So now we turn to the reserve and talk a little bit about that. As you know, the city's reserve is critically important to our financial health. It's never been more true than it is right now, as we consider how we're going to balance the budget, given the deficits that we're forecasting. So this just sort of explains how we generate what I consider to be the true reserve. We've made this a little bit easier now that we've separated out the co-mingled nature of that final balance from the CIP, so that the general fund has its own balance. But as you can see there, this still outlines the role that the general fund surplus plays in the overall fiscal health. So we want to try to get back to that scenario as quickly as we can, noting that this year, that surplus will be largely eaten up by balancing budget requirements at the end of the fiscal year. So the FY21 COVID-19 adjustments, this is the same data that we showed you from the strategy. It shows you what we would be, how our reserve would look if we did nothing except rely on the reserve to offset the deficits that we expect for both FY20 and FY21. And then this bar, the FY21 General Fund Reserve COVID-19, shows you where we think the reserve will be if spending and reserves track based on the budget we presented. Now, again, that's very conservative. I think it's very likely that that number improves, and I'm optimistic that we'll finish the year in the neighborhood of 35%. So let's talk about the tourism fund a little bit. As you know, this is where we fund all of our tourism activities, including the operation of the office, the award of the grant funds, and the outside agencies. So a little bit of change this year is we have adjusted revenue expectations from what they typically are, including adjusted the tourism grant process in terms of available dollars, and also put in the COVID-19 adjustment at the end of the year, transferring that balance. This shows you the departmental spending. Not a whole lot of change outside of reducing the contingency and, of course, the tourism development grant fund reduction, because we are consuming that balance to balance the budget at the end of the fiscal year, if it's needed. So that brings us to our fiscal health forecast and staff thoughts. The first thing that we want to talk about is budgetary changes impacting fiscal health. Obviously, there's increased capital project demand. That's reflected by the number of capital projects that we know we are looking at. Obviously, there's increased capital project demand. That's reflected by the number of capital projects that we know we are looking at in the future. That includes a fire department, a police department. We've talked a lot about library needs. We've also talked about the WRHA needs for redeveloped properties that they own. And of course, you saw from the CIP, the consideration of downtown parking. So we have a whole host of capital projects to be considered as we move into future fiscal years and we'll need to be mindful of that as we begin to budget for them. Market complacency for historic tourism. This is just a simple way of talking about our flat revenues. We're hoping that the Tourism Council's increased marketing budget will begin to impact those as we also combine that with the benefits of our tourism grant programs, hoping that we can get back to those as quickly as possible to stimulate the region. We've got a dated visioning process. We're going to be working on that. We did have a very good visioning process planned for the summer and fall months. Obviously, that is likely to be disrupted by COVID-19. So we're going to need to talk a little bit about what GIOs and the visioning process needs to look like for the city going into the fall. Budget stabilization continues to be something that we need to focus on. Our current plan for balancing the budget gives us a great position to do that in future fiscal years. The decreasing lodging tax, the $2 lodging tax continues to decrease and that's something that we need to keep an eye on. And then, of course, COVID-19's economic impacts. We need to be monitoring that to see if it's performing, if those actual impacts are performing to the way, to the degree that we have forecasted them to. Indicators that we're preparing for COVID-19 recovery speed, I think that's really the top of mind issue as we go into FY21 and we begin to exit, the begin to start the governor's forward Virginia plan. How are, how quickly are is are those revenue lines going to recover back to 100% of what we would expect them to be year over year? We think it's going to be a slow recovery and that's what this budget includes is not everything happening at once, but sort of a graduated return to normal, hoping that by the end of that last quarter of the year, we're back to 100% performance in those revenue lines. Decreasing annual surplus, we've addressed that successfully in past years. So we'll return to that focus in future years. The sales tax fund reserve decreasing because of the number of projects, that's something that we're going to have to talk about considerably as we move into future year planning. Increasing service demands, we've been addressing that and this budget shows that by the additional personnel. That's going to be the key is sort of rightsizing our agency to deal with the services that we're expected to provide. The cost of services exceeding revenues, again, we've been sort of adjusting for that as we've gone along. This year's budget takes us a long way toward that. I think the indicator of how well we're doing is the list of items that were not included is much smaller this year than it has been in previous years. So I think that we're doing pretty well, but that's something we're going to have to keep an eye on. School cost increases on operational and capital side. Obviously, the city doesn't have a tremendous amount of influence over that. We know that future school construction has been talked about considerably with the school system and that will be an impact on our overall budget. And we'll need to continue to monitor that as well as identify at what level are we going to be required to participate for funding. So the steps that we've taken, this year, we separated out the sales tax and the capital fund that will be reflected in the audit. And hopefully, that makes it much more clear in terms of how the general fund operates in terms of its reserve and fund balance. Budget stabilization, of course, we've taken some steps there to to secure us. That would have been reflected strongly in the end of the FY21 forecast, had it not been for COVID-19. I still think we'll make some good progress there. And if it had been for the steps that the council had taken in the past, certainly COVID-19 would represent a much stronger threat to our budget than it otherwise does. CIP clarity, separating out the education cost into its own category, I think really improves transparency in terms of costs associated with education for capital projects and how that impacts the overall health of the capital fund. COVID-19 adjustments, as we've talked about extensively, relying on the reserve, using the asset of the tourism fund grant programs allows us to limit the damage that COVID-19 does on the progress of our community as it's reflected in budgetary spending. It also allows us to have a faster recovery as we exit COVID-19 mitigation strategies. We won't be trying to make up lost ground with surpluses in the future. So steps to contender, to consider, we talked a lot about last year, the option of doing a school planning fund. And that would require a setting aside some portion of revenue to help generate a fund that could to be relied on to offset the cost of school projects. Obviously, this is not the year for us to do that, given the fact that we're forecasting deficits and we're trying to recover from it. But we don't want to lose sight that that's an important target for us. A five-year budget horizon for the the general fund as well as the CIP, that's still a target item for us. Hopefully, we can get to that. We have implemented new software that might make that a little bit easier. And we'll be looking at making some of those changes in the coming fiscal year. Reviving the strategic planning process that helps us set the goals for the city each year and helps the council know how best to direct the assets of the funding. We still need to talk about a revised MOU with William and Mary for the cost of services. We've talked a little bit with their leadership team about this. It does seem like they are open to the conversation in terms of what the cost is to the city and how much they're currently paying. So that's a topic that we will visit throughout this fiscal year in preparation for next fiscal year's budget. And then a revised reserve policy regarding CIP contribution. We talked about this at the retreat and the idea being that what we would need to do is to, as we achieve 35% as the city's policy, up to 40%, which is the staff recommendation or the general fund reserve, what happens to the excess surplus that might be generated in the general fund moving forward? Now, we know that by building that general fund reserve to as much as forecasted 43% by the end of the fiscal year, we're able to offset the COVID-19 losses much easier. And so we won't be able to do that this year, but in future fiscal years, as our stability returns, we will, that's something that we're going to want to consider and that will help us more strongly fund the CIP in future years. So I wanted to put up a slide from Moody's Investment Services. As you know, that's the credit rating, one of the credit rating agencies that looks at the city's overall financial position as they consider, as we consider offering debt and advises potential investors in that debt that might be offered. And as they point out here, the strength of Virginia cities overall, particularly true in Williamsburg, is that we typically have an average fund balance of 30%. Now, our policy is 35. For quite some time, we have been well above 35. We've got the potential of being slightly lower than that as we close out the FY21 year. But again, I'm optimistic that we're going to finish a little ahead of where we're forecasting and come out very close to 35%. Williamsburg Way, you know, I like to talk about this because I think it's important to remember how the budget fits into the overall process of completing the city's mission. So it starts with the dashboards, our progress of reporting on how the departments are doing in terms of the metrics that we've determined are important to measure. The National Citizen Survey done every two years tells us how the citizens feel about those services that are being delivered. Then we have the goals, initiatives and outcomes that are developed, which gives us those key targets of where we need to be making our investments. And then the budget allows us to accomplish that vision, which is, of course, the center. So ideally, it's all driving toward the center of the vision and guiding the process of determining how best to spend the money. So the budget development calendar this year was a little bit different as we went through the fiscal year and had to adjust for COVID-19. We find ourselves now coming out of April into May and we had to adjust the schedule by 30 days. Normally, we would adopt our budget at the May meeting and we decided to postpone for 30 days, which gave the staff more time to do some analysis and prepare revenue projections based on COVID-19 and make the adjustments to the budget. So now we are on path to adopt the budget in June, just in time for the budget year to begin in July. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Mr. Trivit, just for the benefit, first of all, thank you very much for the presentation. Lot of great information here, but just for the public's benefit, at our city council meeting on Thursday, we will hold a public hearing at which time we will accept public comment on anything related to the budget, operating and capital. I don't think we generally get much comment on the utility fund or the other funds, but those two tend to be the ones of greatest interest. Then council will wait until the following month before we actually vote on a budget.
That's right, yes. And it is important to note that when we look at the agenda for Thursday, there are a number of public hearings listed. Each one sort of has a specific purpose. And one of them does list out the utility fund and it says that we're setting that rate. There's no proposed change in the utility rate. That public hearing is regarded, required to set the rate regardless of the fact that we're not increasing it.
Right. I'll come to my colleagues for questions and comments.
Well, first, I just want to compliment the city manager and finance director, Dameron, for the work that they've done. As I listened to the presentation, you know, in awe of all that we're able to accomplish in this proposed budget for 2021, given where we are with the uncertainty of the effects of COVID. And, you know, just I wish only that we didn't have to deal with it because it would be a much better, better position and certainly much more comfortable. But with that said, I think for you all to have proposed a budget that that will ultimately end up with 35% still in our reserves, still still meet all of the requirements of the expectations of our citizens, paying a COLA increase for our employees, education, everything is still in this budget despite, you know, being down in revenues and absolutely we've made up those revenues through through our reserve fund, which is a policy that I'm very proud of and certainly very, very proud that our predecessors have made that determination and that we've continued that tradition. So I don't have any questions at the moment. I'll defer to some of my colleagues if they have any questions that you have, listen, want to listen to those and then maybe come back.
Drew, thank you so much. First off, I wanted to echo what Vice Mayor Pons has stated and please pass along my appreciation to Barbara Dameron and all department heads for coming together and figuring out savings and making tough choices amid this pandemic crisis. We're all in this together and I think it's indicative of this with your budget. I'm pleased that the the structural aspects of the foundation for this budget is sound, which means that we're able to still deliver quality of services to our residents amid this pandemic. And again, to Vice Mayor Pons's point, that's that's because of our predecessors being able to make these wise and prudent fiscal decisions that that lead us to our our ability to continue to spend on certain priorities along with adding and maintaining those quality of services. So I had a couple of questions and then I had a few observations. The first question is, can you walk us through? I understand that you may have stated before in discussing the financial strategy that you may have a mid-year assessment and there at that point assess where the city is with the FY21 budget that we're going to adopt by June. And maybe reconfigure the budget. So what are, what are some things that we can expect at that mid-year review, which I assume is December?
Right. We would look at, I mean, December, January or February, somewhere in that line. We hope to have enough data in terms of revenue performance to advise you whether or not we think we're going to be on target with our projection or off target. What we're hoping is that we're off target and that the outcome is much more positive. That would be reflective of a couple of different things happening. Number one, we finish FY20 at a stronger position than we thought we would. Right now, we're tracking for a little bit better than what we thought and hopefully, as we go into the next few months, that continues to be the case. And then the last, probably the more important part would be that FY21's revenues recover faster than what we have budgeted for. As I said, we have set up a process where we think that the return to normal revenues in sort of those critical revenue lines is graduated over time because consumer confidence has taken a hit and it may take a while for that to return. And so we don't know exactly what travel will look like. Are people going to be excited to come and stay in a hotel? We, it's impossible to know. Other early indicators are that, yes, for some folks, that that's exactly going to be the case. So it's possible that those revenues recover faster and we have a much stronger position mid-year revenue perspective-wise than we thought. And then finally, I think the unknown still is state and federal aid that may come. We know that Congress continues to look at assistance to be passed down. We're told that the next tranche of funding to be considered by Congress would include direct locality aid to offset revenue losses. And so if that materializes, that also could improve our position. And so if any of those things or all of those things happen, we could find ourselves mid-year with some unanticipated revenue to be assigned. And so we would be able to come back to council and say, okay, we've been planning for these transfers at the end of the year from three different sources, the reserve, the Tourism Development Fund and the CIP. Where would you like to put money back? And so obviously, we can make those decisions then.
And obviously, we're also going to potential capital projects and also maybe some of the unfunded projects that were listed in the PowerPoint today. Speaking of which, if you mind going to the slide that says what is included. So I think the premise of the budget is simple. It really speaks to what our collective cities' policies should be implemented and especially in lean time, not necessarily lean times, but in the crisis like with COVID-19. I think particularly it's important to see where we're putting our money in terms of best positioning ourselves to address this pandemic. So I wanted to just clarify and kind of pick your brain a little bit about how you're arriving at including certain budgetary items versus what's not. So in another slide, just keeping at that slide, but in the up, you know, later slide, you mentioned that, for example, with the take-home vehicle program, it's really crucial to retention and recruiting police officers. And obviously, public safety is a very important driver for any local government, just from a basic essence. So, you know, how do you analyze that significance with the take-home vehicle program? For example, and pushing that off, deferring it to another year, not saying that's not important, just deferring to another year and yet fund certain positions such as property maintenance inspectors or or some other item which, you know, may total up to fund such a vehicle take-home program. So how are you being able to assess the cost and benefits of these projects?
That's an excellent question. So just in this case specifically, the amount for the capital or for the take-home vehicle pro, policy or program is $105,000. That's a little misleading, though, because I think that the chief of police would tell us if he were here that his officers would much prefer an actual take-home vehicle. And what we talked about is the fact that while we could adopt some kind of a policy to institute a take-home vehicle allowance for officers, it wouldn't be the same and it wouldn't have the the impact that was desired. What we really need to do is figure out how to solve that take-home vehicle issue in a meaningful way, which likely means adding to the fleet, which has a much greater cost because then we're we're buying new cars to add to the fleet. We're maintaining those cars. Ideally, it's offset a little bit by the fact that we go from cars that are on duty 24 hours a day, every day to having some rest, but we don't know exactly how to categorize that. So the real cost of the take-home vehicle policy is much, much bigger.
So with the, and that's really helpful. And that's not to say that, you know, there's one over the other. I think all these needs are important and you have to, you as staff have made the difficult decision to provide this recommendation. So there's definitely nothing taken away from that. We deeply respect all the work that you've done and I'm sure everything has had a lot of thought into it. It's not easy. In terms of the cost for certain new positions like the property maintenance inspector, the two new police officers, the increased parking ambassador hours, which not sure if there's going to be a lot of parking needs within a few months. I hope so, but you know, is that include the cost for insurance and healthcare and other soft costs around just the salary itself?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so that's kind of what we could expect is the full picture. Okay, that's really helpful. In terms of your proposed budget, In terms of your proposed budget for licenses and permits, I know you mentioned this in the previous, in your presentation earlier, but I didn't notice that some fees were increased, some upwards of towards 65%. I know you mentioned that it's still low in the region. I'll mention something with that, with my observations, but where is that going to?
Yeah. So those increases are designed to help us offset an increase in cost in the codes and inspections office. We're adding the property maintenance inspector as well as making some staff changes. So we're talking about doing some reclassification that will give us some redundancy there. So that's, that's where the money generated will go.
I think these are truly unprecedented times, but the closest precedent that I can think of is the Great Recession back in 2010. This is kind of a curveball action because I don't know the answer. But you may know, within those budget years from when the Great Recession really hit to a little bit afterwards, did the city ever increase taxes or increase its fees at those times?
I don't have the answer to that, Councilman. I do think that there is a tax increase close proximity. Mayor, hey, the mayor may have a stronger recollection.
Let's see a nod.
Yeah, I believe that's when we went from 54 cents to 57 cents. Mr. Pons, is that your recollection? Mr. Pons?
Yes. Yeah. The, I think that sounds about right. I know that in 2011, I believe we went to 60 cents. But to your, to your question, Councilman Zhang, I don't remember the exact year.
Yeah, I think I'd be interested to see that. Obviously, I just saw it during your presentation, Drew, so it's not meant to be a gotcha moment, but.
Well, Ms. Dameron, Ms. Dameron may have that information if she's.
Well, and if I may add, we also increased other taxes and fees during that same period. The difference with the Great Recession was that thankfully, the city was able to begin reducing expenses well before the impact of the reassessment hit us. So Mr. Tuttle and the city staff at the time did a great job of reining back in what the city was spending. As an example, the property maintenance inspector, but there were a whole host, a whole host. There were a number of positions that were taken out of the budget. And, and then that put the city in a position where we only had to raise the taxes a smaller amount compared to what we might've had to do otherwise.
Right, right. That's really helpful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, just one general observation. I think this is again, a budget that's structurally sound. I love some new things, Drew, that you've taken our guidance on from the retreats and through the planning process. I like how it's more transparent. I like how you separated the school CIP fund to its own separate spreadsheet so that we can clearly look at what all the expenses are with that. I love how, you know, with Colonial Williamsburg and working with our partners, institutional partner there, that we're able to find a reuse for $1.3 million that's transparent and also one that goes to the benefit of all residents. I, I like where, that we're able to maintain these quality of services moving forward. And I think we really do set the exemplary, the example of how local government should function. So that's not lost upon any of us, I believe. But, you know, I think to your earlier point about saying that we still have the lowest rates or, or tax rates or fees in the region, I think that's a great source of pride and I think everyone agrees here. I do think using it as a rationale to continually increase it because we are the lowest up to certain thresholds is a bit misleading. I think it's, we should be strongly advocating for maintaining those standards of being that locality that has the lowest tax rates and fee structures will be, being able to deliver on some of these great services. And I know, I recognize that there are increasing service needs. I think that's something that'll be felt down the road, but you know, I'm particularly sensitive and maybe I'm a little bit, dramatic on this part, but you know, I think with this COVID-19 impact on its economy and even us individually, whether we're an employer, employee or retired, you know, I, I think the fiscal impacts are going to be felt beyond these, this particular fiscal year and in 2021. And, you know, I wanted to ensure that we obviously need to be able to retain that quality of services. And I commend you for finding a way to do that and also being sensitive about potential increases that that could be revisited later down the road, maybe within the mid-year budget review or some other fiscal year. But with that, I'm open to hearing opportunities. And again, Drew, thank you so much and to staff for creating a wonderful budget.
Mr. Zhang, if I may, could you help me understand exactly what increase you would like to not see? It's proposed in the current budget? Because if staff's going to, if we're all going to have a conversation about what we need to manipulate or modify in order for the public to have the opportunity to comment on it effectively and then for staff to create a budget that satisfies all of us, what exactly would you like to see done?
Sure. I think there are three general points we should consider. One is looking to what spending that we can particularly postpone after the mid-year assessment. But that's kind of hard to tell because that's all predicated on the data that needs to be incoming. But second, in terms of to your, to specifics, I do question about the license and permits. Even though it is a low fee technically throughout the region, I think it just sends a broader message of if we're able to maintain their current license and permit with, I think it's a reinspection fee, home inspection fee and something about a fee, a fee that comes from not working with the permit. It's in the budget message. I think there's three fees that Mr. Tribin has postponed. That's something I just want to clarify and spell out a little bit more. Maybe I'll learn a lot more from hearing the public hearing. It's not necessarily a hard stop, Mr. Mayor, but it's something I would like to see a little bit more in terms of scrutiny and maybe what qualifies that. I know that the funding goes to a property maintenance manager. Obviously, there are a lot of crucial needs in the city. I just want to see a little bit more about that, but obviously I'm open to that. And lastly, I wasn't going to bring it up today, but because I've taken up too much of the time. But with the cigarette tax increase, obviously I understand that smoking is bad. Being a former smoker myself, I know obviously the bad effects of it, but it's also regressive tax. So I'm wondering where the roughly $40,000 is going to go to funding in particular. Something I'm comfortable with, Mr. Mayor, is if the funding goes to some sort of anti-smoking program. So in other words, a more attenuated purpose than just rely, having the general fund rely on a regressive tax, that's just going to decrease along the road. And overall, I'm just concerned about a creeping, what I'm seeing of a creeping tax increase or, or rate increase down the road. And obviously, that, that's in of itself, its own discussions, but I just wanted to at least lay out specifically some of the questions I have with some of the budget items today. I'm happy to elaborate anymore. I hope to answer your question.
So Mr. Tribin, maybe it would be helpful if, before Thursday, if possible, you could give us a little bit more description of, you know, as we had the chart with where Williamsburg compares with all the different tax rates from property tax to meals tax to rooms tax. Could we get a breakdown of where we fit regionally within those application fees? And, and then let us look at that so we have a better understanding of. Because when we apply a fee directly to the program that provides the service, that's the whole point of the fee, that it should be covering what it costs us to deliver that service. And by having the additional inspector, theoretically, we should be able to deliver a higher level of service or, and maybe the higher level is just what should be the regular expectation. But just so we have some basis of comparison, I think that would be helpful.
Sure. I know that the building official, when he proposed the fee increases, had done that work. So that should not be hard.
Thank you, Mr. Zhang. Anything else from you?
No, thank you.
Ms. Ramsey?
Well, thank you and, and thank you, Drew, and to everyone for putting together the budget and obviously all the hard work and manipulation that went into it. One thing I would say back to the last conversation on license and fees, I think it would also be helpful to see when those fees were put into place. I think there are some that we've had for a long time that were never sort of stepped up as the cost of sort of the, even the cost of the people who have to take care of, of the business. I know one that I'm familiar with is the fee for an inspection on a rental property. And I don't think it's gone up in the past 15 years, although I dare say that the cost of doing that work has probably increased from when it was put into place. So that might be a also helpful consideration. One thing that I, I wanted to ask too, as we talked about shifting the money from the CIP and the Reserve and the TDF. And your slides did take into account shifting a million dollars from the TDF to the grant program that we instituted last year. I think that that's helpful for last month. I think that's helpful for the public to recognize that we are trying to sort of spread the budget as, as far as we can to help our businesses in need there. And I was specifically pleased to see that we are not only granting the 2% COLA for the employees, but there are no plans to eliminate any positions or to furlough our, our employees. And that is the case, correct?
That's right.
Because I think that everyone that we have obviously is probably working far more now than, than they had before. And so it shows that we're moving ahead to keep even with that. And Mr. Pons and I talked about the Colonial Williamsburg donation request this morning as well. I think all of us did and felt the need to keep that amount funded and, and recognize that even if there aren't some of the programs that they had originally planned, that there will be other programs, perhaps something new coming out of the COVID-19 that they, that will also benefit all residents and visitors and would want to use that money for. So I would be in agreement for, for keeping that. And on your CIP list, just for clarification for a couple of particular projects, you mentioned some projects, including sidewalks that would be postponed. And there were some figures listed there that seem relatively low. And, and I just wanted to comment that as we look at these projects, it's often a multi-year program. And that figure could be for design and planning and not necessarily for the execution of the project. So if the public is looking at some of those projects, they need to remember it could definitely be one phase or one aspect of the entire project.
That's right. We moved, even multi-year projects, you know, basically we moved the timeline for those projects out one year. So while we might've had a small number budgeted for next year to begin the planning and design work, the whole project shifted a year.
Right. And, and as you said too, you, you talked to the various department heads and got their input before you created that list, correct?
That's right.
So I think that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Yeah, Drew, thanks for all the work along with the staff input there. I have several questions and then some comments and requests. In terms of the real estate tax, so we know that the, the real estate tax revenue is a product of the rate which we are not changing, the assessments that may go up a little bit for certain property owners, but also an increase in our real estate property portfolio. Can you talk a little bit about, we know we've got, you know, increased development in High Street and Midtown Road coming online. When do we start seeing that revenue?
Sure. So we did see some of that revenue already as building permits were pulled. You know, there's a, there's a large number of fees associated with that that are paid. But as, as those businesses begin to open, we can expect to see revenues start to come in as associated with that. If that's your question, I think the plan is for that to be completed at the end of the fiscal year, next fiscal year. So it would be one more fiscal year before we really start to be a bit, to see the big impact associated with those new developments. Now, High Street's a different story because that's a little faster, much further along. So some of those revenues will be included in this coming fiscal year.
Okay, thanks. And then regarding the safer grant for the four firefighters, when do you think we'll know whether we're getting that or not?
Well, they just, I mean, I can't remember the exact day, but they were well behind schedule in terms of advertising that from what they normally do. It has been advertised. The due date is fast approaching. I can't remember what it is. I know that the application is well underway. And then typically, we would find out in October, but something tells me that it'll be delayed this year.
And then in terms of state budget impacts that might reduce the revenue, when do you think you'll get a handle if there's any red flags there?
You know, right now, I don't think we're seeing a whole lot that might adversely impact our revenue. You know, there's been some talk about 599 funds, but what we heard from the special session of the General Assembly, largely the legislators understand that that's not an impact that can be passed on. I think what we're really expecting is that that first tranche of federal relief, some of which I think the Congress intended to make its way to local governments, will be captured almost entirely by the state government and used to satisfy their budget needs, which sounds bad, except for the fact that it could offset what they might otherwise do to reduce our budget.
And then in the, the budget book, there was that $100,000 for the Newport News water capacity payment. Can you just explain that? And then how long is that contract and, and when would that possibly go up or change?
That's a good question. I don't have the answer on the, on, right in front of me for how long the contract is or what the renegotiation schedule is. We can get that to you though, of course. The purpose of that contract is to offset, you know, a situation where we have a particularly dry year. And so the city runs out of water capacity. We have a line connection directly to Newport News Water Works that we can engage to bring their water into our system to keep meeting the demands of the city. So it's really an emergency fail-safe.
And speaking of emergencies, if there was a, a quality problem with our existing water, could we immediately tap into the Newport News or is there an advanced period we need to notify them?
Well, it's interesting that you, you mentioned that because one of the, the challenges that I don't know that we would have really thought about pre-COVID-19 is the requirements for operating a water treatment plant. And, you know, we have, as we've said already, that the big theme of this budget is adding staff and that's largely because we, we don't have a huge staff to do the work. And when we start thinking about the impacts of a pandemic, that becomes very acute because it doesn't take much to have a staff member become sick, their coworker becomes sick, and then we're not able to operate the water treatment plant. And we've taken a lot of steps to prevent that from happening. But one of the things that we did early in the, the pandemic impacts to Hampton Roads was better solidify the potential for that connection so that it's literally opening a valve to let the water into our system. Because we, we were worried that a situation might generate where we couldn't have enough staff to operate our water treatment plant.
Given the partnership with Newport News, is there any chance you could explore staff sharing also to combat, you know, if you've got an issue with staff availability?
Yeah, we, we had talked about that. I know that Mr. Clayton, whoever sees the utility department, worked very closely with Newport News and the Department of Water Quality to make sure that if we did have to activate a fail-safe plan, we could do one or both of those things at the same time. And also make sure that the quality of the water that we get from Newport News meets the standard of the city Williamsburg and that the mixing of those two water sources wouldn't generate some unforeseen problem.
Okay, thanks. So I've got, in addition to the questions, I've got six comments or requests here. The first one relates to the human services, the 13 agency, outside agencies, which the Social Services Board reviewed and those were pre-COVID applications. Can we request that the Social Services Board ask these agencies for a letter indicating the impact of COVID on their operations and whether they want to justify a request for a supplemental grant?
Certainly, I think the short answer is yes, we can do that. My suggestion would be that if that's something the council is interested in doing, we continue on the path that we have in front of us for adopting this budget and do that as a separate, a separate component. We can send out new. We can send out new letters encouraging those particular agencies to look at their operations, identify needs and submit new requests and have a, repeat the process with the advisory board to look at those requests and identify a recommendation for city council.
The second request is, we talked about one of the projects being delayed, which was the, for the fire department, the mobile data terminals for fire and EMS. That was a $44,000 impact. And my understanding, that project's been delayed for probably three or four years. And we know that a couple of months ago, when we were reviewing, you know, some of the department metrics is that EMS were not actually making the goal of our EMS response time. So these devices to me are both mission critical and are really valid countermeasures for addressing some of the metrics in our dashboards. They allow the first responders to decrease response time and also provides critical information available as they're responding to emergencies, which is even more important now with COVID in terms of knowing what you're going into. It also helps like our battalion chief, if they're responding mutual aid, they'll be able to see what other engines and apparatus are responding there. And we know that both James City County and York County already have this equipment. And also as Benny was saying before, you know, we're interested in public safety, recruiting and retention. So we really want to give our fire department the technology that our neighboring departments have. So I would recommend that we, we as a council find $44,000 to fund that. And this is a phased project, so this is just, you know, one portion of the, the project, which I think you've got phased over four, four and a half years. I think we need to start the first phase. And then the third one is I do agree with the recommendation to increase the funding for Thomas Nelson Community College by the $5,670.
Thank you.
And then the fourth one, you know, we see in the budget book under the capital improvements, that Fire Station Two, it says that the currently the project scope and programming is scheduled for the second half of FY20, which is now with the award of a PPEA design bill. So we know that we approved the project a year ago, March, and we really haven't seen any presentations on it. So, and, and according to the budget book, we're going to be awarding it, the design bill contract within the next month and a half. So is there some way we can get a presentation on that on Thursday? Or at the, at the least or the most, the work session in June?
Well, there's no presentation to give. I can tell you that what we have been doing is the, the new fire chief has been working with design consultants to revise the programming plan. They have completed that work as well as updated their cost estimates and are now working on bid packages to put out to the public. And so the idea, what we had been aiming for prior to COVID-19 was to have that ready for May to release the, the bid documents. But obviously COVID-19 has slowed that down a little bit, but we're still going to be pretty close.
So we still think by the end of the year, we can at least release the, the bid documents?
That's my hope. Yes, sir.
And then five, so we, we have the GIOs in the budget book, which are good in terms of how they're laid out, but there's really no status of those. And was hoping that either in June or the first meeting in July, we can have a couple of sentences after each of the GIOs saying, you know, what did we accomplish, what we, what didn't we, where do we stand with it? And I think that'll help in the, the new council coming in for their first meeting, understanding where we are. Because we may not have accomplished much on some of those and we may have, but done a great job on others, but there's no way to tell.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that. I mean, one of the things that we did this year to try and get away from all the reporting that was required was to go to an online format for reporting progress on the GIOs. So what we need to do is look at, is there a way to take that online format and download it so that it can be legibly understood in the budget document? So we'll look at that, but I can't promise it'll be done for June.
But maybe then each meeting, we can ask, you know, for this section, where do we stand? Because we've seen that not, the dashboard doesn't always line up with reporting what, what the objective was in terms of what, what the tasks were. So there's sometimes a disconnect there. So, you know, to, to be able to explain to the public, okay, we've got these GIOs, what did we actually accomplish? We can't do that right now, from what I've seen.
It's not in the budget book maybe, but certainly it's online.
Okay, well, maybe we can walk through that.
Sure.
In terms of the department meeting, department updates. And then concerning the school district, so the school district funding, as I understand it, are three, three different buckets. One is the, the operating budget in terms of buckets that, that the city's funding. One would be the operating budget, two would be the capital plan, and then three is the pass-through of state sales tax that we, we pass through to the school district. Is, is that correct?
That's right.
So of those three, we know that in terms of the capital plan, there's been discussions between you and the county and, you know, actually managing what that should look like. We know in terms of the pass-through of the state sales tax, there may be a deficit on there just because the sales tax aren't there and there's nothing we can really do about that. But, so the question I think the city council is, in terms of the operating budget that, that we've put forward in our budget now that was published by Drew, can we commit to funding the, the school district with that money that we intended to fund them initially before COVID-19? And I would recommend that we do.
Maslin, could you clarify that a little bit, exactly what you mean by that?
So we've got a budget and Drew can give you the number in terms of what our plan was in terms of funding the school district from an operating standpoint. My suggestion is that we continue with that dollar amount.
Independent of whatever James City County decides?
Correct.
So you would change the funding ratio outside of the contract?
So I, I would, I'd put it more, we had a funding ratio going in before COVID-19 that created a number. I would keep that commitment to the school district.
With, with the exception of the sales tax for education?
Correct.
Okay.
Because that's not really part of the formula, right, is it?
It's not really. I mean, it's a pass-through of what we get and then there has been sort of this, this.
And we, we have no control over that.
Right, we do not.
So that's all I had.
Can I, if I may just follow up on the school question? Would that be okay, Mr. Mayor?
Please, I'm sorry, yes.
So, so the, the 1% sales tax for education, do we account that as part of our contribution or is that separate from our contribution? When we look at the percentage under the contract that we contribute, the 1% sales tax, is that part of that percentage or, or is that held separately?
I believe it's part of the percentage, but I see Barbara Dameron has unmuted herself and is prepared to answer.
Okay.
So the, for example, for FY21, our percent is 9.6 and that includes both our local share plus the pass-through for sales tax.
Right.
Okay.
And that's why, you know, when we talk about James City County's proposed reduction, it would include that, the total number. So, you know, some people would look at that number and do a calculation and say, oh, well, that's a 10% savings for the city. It's not really because it includes that pass-through amount for the sales tax for education. So our savings, if we did reduce the budget, would be much smaller than that total 10% number.
You were kind of breaking up. I think I understood you though, but I, and I just want to make sure that, that the county is doing the same, does, has the same process so that we're, we're apples and apples and not apples and oranges when we look at the percentage of contribution. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Pons. Other discussion?
Yeah, I think I was going to say is, like Mr. Maslin, I would support the budget increase for the TNCC, Thomas Nelson, I forgot to mention that.
And so here, Mr. Mayor, I, I support as well. It's, it's the same funding as the previous year, it's just, well, it seems to be an administrative issue at hand.
Right. I concur.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the thumbs up, Mr. Pons. Other conversation, direction to staff, questions, comments? Okay, we will take this item up at our next meeting, which will be this coming Thursday at 2 o'clock. Mr. Tribbit, anything you want to leave us with there?
No, just that, you know, we, we will not plan to do another formal presentation on the budget for the public hearings. We'll let it stand as it is. We will definitely work on getting you some information back on the, the questions that were raised, particularly relevant to the permitting fee thing, and address some of these questions that Mr. Maslin has raised as well in terms of, is there council consensus for doing some of these additional funding items and processes?
And as we all may have seen, Ms. Dameron did send us information that the real estate rate increased from 54 cents to 57 cents in FY2013. And so that, that goes back to the housing impact really happening about 2008. We were able to get on the front end of that, but eventually the, it caught up to us and we had to raise the rates in, I guess that would have been the big, in 2012 as we were heading into 2013. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could we also ask Ms. Dameron for the next meeting? I think it would be helpful to actually go back further because I think there were times when the rate was actually higher and we've actually come down from that.
Yeah, and I believe she's going to go back and research that. So that's a, a good point, just to get an overall history. Mr. Tribbit, I'm sorry, I neglected to ask, one other thing that would be helpful if, if possible, and it's not an immediate thing, this could be six months from now or by next year. It would be interesting to see the trend line on the $2 hotel fee compared to our available inventory of hotel rooms because we haven't had any new hotels built in the city in a number of years and we have lost some inventory. So just like to see how those two compare to each other.
Sure.
Okay, anything else from Mr. Tribbit? This takes us to city council communications. Anything any members would like to report from their liaison assignments to their colleagues?
Mr. Mayor, I have one particular announcement, although it's, it's a little untraditional because this is not coming from a liaison assignment, but May is the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and I wanted to commend you, Mr. Mayor, for signing, signing a proclamation declaring this month as such. And I think it's particularly important nowadays that not only does the city celebrate diversity and whether through ethnicity, sex, gender or ways of, modes of thought, but I think this comes at a time where we're seeing rising acts of xenophobia and violence across the country. Thankfully, not here in Williamsburg, but coming from a city that, where we've educated some of the founders, our founding fathers who've espoused some of these ideals. I'm particularly grateful as an Asian American that you, Mr. Mayor, have signed a proclamation statement so, and I'm sure I speak for many others who appreciate you as well. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Zhang. Anybody else? Okay, this takes us to schedule meetings. Mr. Tribbit, anything you'd like to highlight coming up this month?
You know, we don't have a whole lot to highlight, but we do have the EDA roundtable on the 20th. Vicky Semino, who'll be giving a presentation at Thursday's meeting of city council, will also be presenting to the EDA roundtable. So if you miss it at city council, you can catch more information at the roundtable. The ARB meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow has been canceled. They do have one scheduled for the 26th, if there's business pending.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Tribbit? This takes us to open forum.
No, sir.
We have nobody on the line waiting to speak. We'll, we'll wait just a moment in case somebody calls in. Sorry for the lull in the airtime here, but.
Mr. Mayor, while we're waiting, I guess we could also note that we did not receive any written comments through the city council's email address or the online portal.
Thank you, Mr. Tribbit. Okay, nobody's calling in, so that concludes our business. Do we have anything for closed session today, Mr. Pons?
No, sir. With that, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Felico?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.